Signed up to speak in the order in which they signed in. Vice Chair Amy Borwitz will be monitoring the speaker's time. She will signal each speaker with the time they have remaining at one minute, thirty seconds, and ten seconds. Again, please make your comments as brief as possible, but no more than three minutes.
My risk analysis doesn't match yours, so now I'm labeled as an outside agitator. I conduct myself in a professional manner, at least I think I do, representing those who feel the way I do, and now my group of peers warrants a police presence. I've listened to our incredible staff speak about coaching our students to stop out bullying. Yet a member who serves on this board frequently spreads hate on their personal social media account. Do better, Northfield. Oh, I'm not, I'm not pointing anybody out specifically, I didn't say a name.
I have already asked permission to speak without my mask.
Was that, I, did I ask you that last meeting? Okay, I have thick skin and I will remain unbothered by the ignorant words of those unwilling to open their minds, and I will continue to be a voice for our children unafraid. Last week, I made the tough decision to call my student out of school for an upset stomach and a insignificant cough. After speaking with a nurse, I was appalled to learn about the new COVID protocols that were revised just one week ago. The update protocols state that the person with at least one common symptom or two less common symptoms needs to follow the COVID decision tree, which states the person needs to quarantine quarantine for ten days or receive a negative COVID test. That sounds really reasonable until you dig into the less common symptoms listed. If you think with an open mind and contemplate just how many ailments. Remember that you only need two of these to warrant a mandatory COVID test: sore throat, fatigue, nausea, chills, muscle pain, vomiting, headache, or congestion. I'm going to use my time because it's important to me to repeat and emphasize pick two of these symptoms and think of a virus that would not produce this result. Sore throat, fatigue, nausea, chills, muscle pain, vomiting, headache, or congestion. I would venture to say that this list covers the broad spectrum of viruses as a whole. On the contrary, you have decided to seek COVID out of these symptoms. I don't claim to be an expert, however, I am a mother with firsthand experience in the sick kid department. I have absolutely no reason to believe my child has COVID, but in the past eighteen months, we as a society have concluded that a decision tree is a better indicator of health than a mother's or father's intuition. Shameful. Why has a pandemic overridden a parent's rights to make decision for their children? Anything less than perfect health is reason enough to keep kids at home from school and deny them their education. My child will not miss out on seven days of instruction, picture day, star reading, and math testing because of this overreaching policy. I'd like to emphasize to those who do feel protected by these safety protocols, my child's teacher is vaccinated and was masked and contracted COVID two days into the school year, and this class was not required to quarantine. The fact of life is viruses exist. Why, after eighteen months, are we still living in fear of this virus? He interrupted my time. Was that fair? Was that really?
Hello again, I'm Dr. Sandy Turvis, as you said, and I'm a physician. I work with the frail elders in our community, some of our most vulnerable community members in nursing homes and assisted living settings. And I've been leading COVID work for the company that I work for, for the past year and a half, summarizing the research, presenting, advising, teaching my colleagues, a company of one hundred eighty people, fifty-five of whom are physicians and nurse practitioners. I also live in this district and have a high schooler, and I'm happy to be here and I'm happy for the, the work that all of you do and your thoughtful consideration of this difficult topic. And one thing is that I just want you all to know that I, I've talked to Dr. Hulman quite a bit, probably a little more than he thinks probably has time for, and, but I want to be a resource to any of you as well, just, just want to make that, make you aware of that. I, I want to mention that I think, you know, the Delta wave of COVID has, looks like it's cresting, maybe not quite yet in Minnesota, cases are coming down a little bit, that does still mean a lot of people are still getting sick. In this state, there are still hospitals and ERs that I'm hearing about daily that can't find beds for their sick patients, whether their illness is COVID or something else, because of the high numbers of COVID cases and, and short-staffed situations. And every, every time there's a, an infectious illness with a curve of cases that goes up and then down, they all do come down, right? But why do they come down? People, maybe people get sick or get immunized, and so now they won't get it again. Some people also modify what they do, and we, you know, we wear masks, we stay home, or we do things that, that decrease the spread of the illness. That's one of the ways that occur, one of those epidemiology curves comes down. So I'm really here to talk about other COVID mitigation layers. None of the layers are perfect, masks aren't perfect, none of the layers are perfect, but the more layers we have, the more we decrease spread. So staying home really isn't a good option anymore for a lot of people. It wasn't good for my kids, and I know that the district is working hard on a lot of other layers, and I want to just applaud those efforts with, in terms of improving ventilation and getting a testing program going. I'd like to really encourage a screening testing program, so testing asymptomatic people in addition to testing those with symptoms. Of course, it would be an optional opt-in sort of program, but that could really help along with, I'd want to really encourage the district to consider outdoor lunches at as many schools as possible while cases are high. The weather's good, cases are high, both of those things will change, but now is a good time to try and implement more of that, and then we'll also be ready for the next wave, which we would love to see not happen, but if it does, we'll, we'd be ready with those measures in place. Thank you for your time and all your work.
Thank you, Dr. Turvis. Our next speaker is Lisa Sexton. Welcome, Lisa.
Hello, hello, can you hear me? My name is Lisa Sexton, and I'm here representing Isaiah, which is a interfaith grassroots organization working on making Minnesota a place where everyone can thrive, no matter where you come from or how you look. Anyway, I am not a medical provider or a scientist. However, I do have a lot of faith in science, and I just want to thank you for being firm with your mask mandate. You know, I keep hearing about people getting sick, even people who have been vaccinated, and so unfortunately, as much as I would like to be, for us to be out of the woods, we aren't yet. And I am newer to Northfield, I moved here about two years ago. And so I don't have a personal connection with the school district yet, but I hope to have children soon, and so, you know, I just feel good about the fact that my future kids will go to a school district where, you know, you take these risks seriously and do what you can to mitigate the public health risks. And, you know, even though I don't have kids in the school district, I am a resident, and, you know, the health of our students and teachers affects everyone. So, yeah, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Ricky Livingston. Welcome, Ricky.
Um, let's see. I'm also, I work for MDH, the African-American COVID Community Coordinator. So I'm board in the H for like about a year. Oh, sorry. Can you hear me better now? There, I got to lean to this thing right quick. I'm the, um, I work for Minneapolis Department of Health, I'm the African-American Community Coordinator. I have like, um, probably did close to five hundred vaccination testing sites and events across the state since it began, really starting back in December I came aboard. And what I've liked about what I've seen at the school board and also the mask mandate was basic protection, because we know for my family, I definitely would have pulled my kids out of school if there wasn't a mask mandate, because it's, it's all I see two for seven, unfortunately, with kids and younger kids and people being infected. And we're starting to see now even more situations where we have young kids with this persistent symptoms after two, three, four months after having COVID. So basically, the long COVID thing affecting the kids. And so, like most parents, the idea of protecting your kids as much as possible is, I mean, what we strive for. Definitely want to reemphasize what was said about testing asymptomatic folks and kind of a consistent kind of randomness to it, because that's very helpful and it's caught a lot of cases, unfortunately. I recently, about a month or two back, I had to leave and go back home to my home state of North Carolina, because, you know, we all have family, and family is always fun and difficult, and I had a lot of my family in North Carolina who were basically those who didn't care to be vaccinated. And so I had about twelve of my relatives infected, and five of them died, and the sixth one is, has died too, with having an autopsy to kind of see what causefully he died of, because not only they're unvaccinated, but they won't get tested to see they even have it. And so I had my brother-in-law die, another brother-in-law infected, my niece get COVID, and my great-niece get COVID, and she's like eight years old, and then other relatives across the board. So the reality of not only what I see in the public, of what I've seen of Minnesota throughout this last six, seventy months, well, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-twenty, also what I see in my family and friends who choose not to, because of whatever reason they have their choice to. And, oh, yeah, one minute left, oh, thirty seconds, okay. Background, retired Navy Marine Corps medic, worked in audiology, virology, immunology, I was part of the immunology clinic in Bahrain in Iraq for a few, for about a year back in the day. And so I've seen a lot of cases and situations where people are not getting affected and so forth, and so it can be troublesome, but I do appreciate the work y'all have been doing, and if I could be of any help, please, and I know Matt from a little ways, but I can, please reach out and I'd help as much, much as I can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ricky. Our last speaker is Sarah Mertz. Welcome, Sarah.
Good evening. So first, I'd really like to express my gratitude to the school board for implementing a mask requirement and for upholding it. You're likely familiar with the recent data released by the CDC looking at rates of COVID outbreaks in schools. They looked at nine hundred and ninety-nine schools in Arizona. Of those, one hundred and ninety-one ended up with a school-associated outbreak. Eight percent of those had implemented an early mask mandate, thirty-three percent implemented a late mask mandate, so they started having a mask mandate after they had the outbreak, and fifty-nine percent had no mask mandate. So you can see from these data just how important the masking is for keeping our kids in school. My kids are loving it. I love to see them come home and tell me stories about their social interactions, getting to see people that they didn't get to see at all last year when they were home. So I'm really grateful to you for putting out this mask requirement. I'd also like to bring attention to Principal Lear's message that he sent out earlier today regarding the frustrations targeted towards school nurses and assistants. Health staff are critical for our students, from those with chronic conditions who need help every single day, multiple times a day, to those who get sick or injured while at school. So I really thank the school for protecting those members of the community, the staff at the school, because they are doing a really important job, and it's appalling to see that they're getting attacked. And so I'd like to just end by saying again, thank you for implementing the mask requirement and for protecting our, our school staff, especially the school nurses. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. That concludes our public comment portion of the evening. We want to thank those who spoke tonight. The board appreciates the time you took to share your perspective. If you chose not to speak tonight but have comments for the board, we are available, email at board@northfieldschools.org. So with that, we'll move on to announcements and recognitions.
Yes, we have a few announcements and recognitions this evening. First, I just want to comment on the wonderful experience that we had last Thursday evening when we held open houses across the district for the projects that were associated with the 2018 bond referendum. So we had open houses for people to check out the spaces at Spring Creek Elementary, at Bridgewater Elementary, here at the district office and area learning center, at Greenville Park Elementary, and the Northfield Community Education Center. And we, of course, had a special program commemorating a year later, but we, we were able to finally have the official ribbon cutting for Greenville Park Elementary, well-attended. We held that program outside. We want to thank our partners from World Architects and from Knutson Construction for helping us plan the event, and Principal Richardson, Anita Ozzy, and all the folks who were involved in helping plan the event. And we, the highlight of the evening, of course, were the four student speakers. And so we just want to publicly, publicly recognize Ellie Njagi, Santi Peralta Marcial, Leo Steinberg, and Mary Lou Street, these four students, some who have been with the district for quite some time, some who had recently moved, just shared some really great and poignant stories about their pride of being in that new building. So I want to thank everyone from the community who attended, and it's a year late, but we were very pleased to be able to share these projects and the story with the community. And as we've said before, we're proud that most of the, almost all the projects came in on time, and when you think that a bulk of the construction happened during COVID, it's pretty impressive. And then in addition, that we were able to deliver the same amount as what we had promised during the referendum, but actually charged the taxpayers two million dollars less on a, on the levy than what we had said because of our excellent bond rating and because of a good bid day, and, and Val Murdestorff, our Director of Finance's financial stewardship. So we are grateful for those spaces, we're grateful for all the people who attended. So that's the events that we had last Thursday. This week is homecoming week at Northfield High School. They have a whole bunch of events. Today was Red, White, and Blue Day, tomorrow is Tacky Tourist Day, Wednesday is Go Fishing, Raider Pride for the Spirit Bus folks, and they're going to have a Spirit Bus where some seniors are going to travel to all district schools, and they're going to gather outside, and it's just having younger children see their peers and looking up to them. It's a, it's a fun event that we're happy to be able to have this year. Thursday, we have a cross, a country versus country club with added pink for the Lace for the Cure fundraiser, and then, of course, Friday Raider Pride Day, and there's a pep fest at Memorial Field at two o'clock, and then the football game is seven PM on Friday night. And then on Saturday, they're going to hold a dance outside at the Memorial Field parking lot. So we wish all of the Northfield High School Raiders, past and present, an enjoyable homecoming week. And then finally, really happy to share with you, this was just some really special news. So Michelle Warden is an educational assistant that we have at Bridgewater Elementary, and we're so proud to share, she shared a photo with us. She recently, actually on September twenty-third, she became a United States citizen, and so she shared the photo of her at the event, and of course, it gives us all goosebumps to see that happen, and so congratulations to Michelle on her United States citizenship that she took the oath on September twenty-third. So congratulations to Michelle. Those are my announcements for this evening, I think you may have one too, Julie.
Yes, do board members have anything they want to add?
I have something I would like to add. So we talk about Northfield High School students and so happy that they're going to be serving as role models and getting our younger students excited about homecoming. Really heart, heartwarming story that I'd like to share. Last Friday evening, the Northfield Raiders played the New Prague Trojans, and it was New Prague's homecoming. But the, they had, there was a student, Mason, who attends New Prague schools, was recently diagnosed with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. So the New Prague students dedicated the game that evening to Mason and had chosen to wear green as their support of, of Mason, which is not one of their school colors. So our Northfield High School students learned of the plan, and our students who traveled to the game joined in in support of Mason. They wore green, and they created a banner that hung on the visitor side. So we are fortunate in that the New Prague Trojans Facebook page picked up a wonderful story about our amazing supportive fans and, and students from Northfield High School, and I imagine there may have been others besides just high school students there as well, but there is a picture posted on the New Prague Trojans Facebook page, and it's, it's a wonderful picture. You see all of our students there, was a, was a good showing by our, our students to drive to New Prague, wearing green and having the banner in front of the visitor side that said hashtag Mason's, Mason Strong. So the, the headline to the Facebook post, posting was "Northfield Students' Suction Supporting Mason Decker. Very classy move by the group, by the Raiders, great respect for Northfield High School, and great role models for other student bodies. Thanks." So it's just really a heartwarming story about students rallying around a student who needs, who needs support, and our, our high school students recognizing that and, offering their support as well. So something we can all be really proud of, our, our Northfield High, our Northfield students. Okay, so with that, we can move on to items for discussion and report. Our first item for report tonight, we have Assistant Director of Special Services Sarah Pratt to talk about an additional licensed special education teacher need in the district. So welcome, Sarah.
Hey, thank you for having me. I am going to address three pieces to this request, first and foremost being the request for a 1.0 special education licensed teacher to address a couple of needs that we have in the district. Our portage numbers, our portage online program numbers in special education have risen since the beginning of the school year, and the caseload is extraordinarily high with over half of the students on that caseload requiring a comprehensive evaluation this school year, which is an extraordinary time dedication for the evaluation pieces. And we also, at Greenville Park Elementary, have a very high caseload rate at current, and historical data shows that our caseloads at Greenville Park typically rise during the school year, as that is where many of our students who open and enrolled during the school year are placed, and in the past, they've had several students who have had special education needs as they enroll throughout the school year. So the, the primary request is for a 1.0 licensed special education teacher. And you have, I think, the salary numbers in there, and with fifty-five percent of the salary being reimbursed through special ed revenue, the net cost to the district would be just over thirty-two thousand dollars for that request. There are two other pieces for consideration as well, for future consideration. We're beginning to gather data for support for our special education staff this school year. We have, a law has been passed this summer to, for all students with disabilities, whether they're on IEPs or 504 plans, we have to hold a meeting prior to December first to determine if there's been any adverse effect of the pandemic on their progress in both general education and special education. We have over seven hundred and sixty students on IEPs in the district and more with 504 plans, so that means we're going to have upwards of eight hundred meetings by December first, in addition to provision of services that already stretch our staff thin. So the Director of Special Services, Cheryl Hall and myself, are starting to look into some possibilities of how we can better support our staff through this one-year process. And one of those pieces we're looking into is hiring clerical, due process clerical supports to help with some of the paperwork load. And then the other piece we're looking into is also how we can identify solutions to help with the administrators and the administrative support that requires us to keep and maintain and sustain our special education teachers through these tough times. Every IEP meeting requires an administrative presence, so that's eight hundred meetings between now and the end of December, or December first, that will require administrative presence in addition to the other tasks that administrators need to do. So we're looking at those two pieces for additional support, and we would use one-time federal funding to support those positions this year. Any questions?
Excellent, thank you, Sarah. Questions, comments? Amy?
Hi, Sarah, thank you for telling us about these situations. I have several questions. One is, I understand how portage students would need special education, but how does special education play out when the student is a portage student? What, what sort of differences does that make?
Sure, that's a great question, and something I didn't add is that we currently have one special education portage teacher for grades K through twelve. So we have one special education teacher needing to be accessing educational supports and services from, you know, beginning phonics through transition to post-secondary in all of those different curricular areas. And really, it's looking at, currently, we have contingency learning plans that were ended officially at the end of last school year, and that's what our special educators had to create for distance learning or hybrid learning options last year. And we are starting the year with implementing those contingency learning plans, and we are quickly turning them into typical IEPs because portage is their school of enrollment. And so it really looks at each individual student's need, and they are delivering services, either individual Zoom sessions, in person. We have the Edgenuity Program that also has another option to it called My Path, which is a more individualized program for students who might not be at grade level or near grade level for reading and math skills, and so there's another portion to that. It also means that the special education teacher may be creating their own coursework and their own courses for some students. Does that answer your question?
That helps, I just am curious how that works, so.
In addition, we have several students who have related services such as speech and language, occupational therapy, social work services, and so we don't currently have any FTE assigned to portage, and so that goes back to the building that they would typically be enrolled in, for those service providers.
And then you talked about the And then you talked about the cost of the position and how 55% of the salary would be reimbursed to the special education budget. But then we always hear about the special education cross subsidy. And I'm wondering if, if that gets absorbed into the cross subsidy, maybe it's more of a question for you, Matt. How does that work?
Yeah. Let's see. Oh, there we go. The light doesn't work on this one. It throws me off. So actually I think that we maybe should have deleted that sentence because we did get one-time federal funding. So it won't be state special ed and part of that formula at all. So it won't go against our maintenance of effort. And so it'll actually just be 100% covered by the federal funds that we got this year.
That's even better.
Yes.
Yeah. So then my, my last question, Sarah?
Yeah.
Is, it sounds like this is pretty important and something that you need right away. And usually the board takes two meetings to before agreeing to it. But I'm going to ask if this is something that you would like to see moved up to individual action today?
If the board is willing to consider it today, that would be wonderful. We, the students are already here and we are stretching our staff thin currently. And so the sooner we could support them by adding staff, the better. So that would be very much appreciated.
But I will make that motion when the time is right. I don't know if you have more discussion you want to do first?
Let's make a motion to move it to an item for individual action.
Okay. So I would like to move that, the first part, the 1.0 FTE licensed special education resource teacher position, that approval for that position be moved to an item for individual action today.
Excellent. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Cory. Any questions or comments? All those in, oh, I'm sorry, Claudia.
I had one more question. I.
But Claudia, what, what we'll do right now is let's vote on the motion. And then it is likely that there will be other questions as well. So I'm sorry, I should have actually just waited for the end of your presentation, but as long as we have a motion on the floor, let's get that worked through. So we have a motion and a second to move this to an item for individual action. Is there any questions regarding the motion? Okay. So with a motion and a second and no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we will deal with that. As we move to items for individual action, we'll go back now to any board members who have any questions from Sarah.
Okay. So I had a question and it's probably for Val then. So I may have missed it. So we're speaking about this year, there's a special reimbursement in future years, or is this just a one-year position?
This is currently a one-year position based on the, the needs we're seeing at the time. And then in the spring, they'll reevaluate staffing and their student projections. But the funding that we received, we, we have the funding for about 27 months. So there is opportunity that there would be more for the following school year. But the intent of this position that you're talking about tonight is a one-year position. It would, I think, I think we had about 190,000. So it doesn't eclipse all of it, but we were also intentional about reserving part of it for obviously other unknowns and things that are going to come up throughout the year. So does that answer your question? Okay.
Other questions or comments? Cory?
Hi, Sarah. With us being about a month into the school year, how difficult might it be to fill this position?
That's a really great question. It could be very difficult. We are also working with contracted service providers as needed. We are hoping to hire. One of the challenges with hiring a position like this, this, at this point in the school year is maybe potentially having an internal candidate want to take this position. And so then we would be back filling another position. And so it could be a little bit of a lengthy process. But first priority would be to fill with an outside, with a qualified candidate. And then if we are a few weeks into that posting and we are not getting qualified candidates, we're prepared to contact contracted service providers who have reached out to us indicating that they have some staff. We also, sorry, we also have a couple of staff who are currently student teaching in our district and will be done by the end of the semester and we're hoping to retain them in some way, shape, or form in the Northfield District as licensed teachers. So.
Thank you. Must the position be filled by one person or can it be split?
It could be split. The, we've talked about that. And the difficulty right now is the, the potential for the FTE need to shift at some point during the school year. So if we filled it with two different people, that would just be a little bit more of a challenge.
Tom?
Question on the, on financing it again. So if 55% is reimbursed through special ed, would the federal money only cover the 32,000? Or would it cover the whole amount?
So the, the 55%, I think, my guess is this is a memo that we've brought a couple of times and that is the typical. But this one actually isn't going to go into the state special ed formula at all. So that actually just doesn't apply to this scenario and just got missed before we sent it to the board. So it will be 100% federally funded. No, no maintenance of effort impact, no cross subsidy impact, one-year position, fully funded. Sorry about that.
Yes, Dr. Hillman?
Even though this does not affect the traditional way that we finance special education positions, it is the time to share the cross subsidy. So Val, would you just, because we just need to be mindful, we are very grateful to the federal government for covering this. We'd like them to do this. We'd like to do what they, them to do what they promised, which is cover 40% of special education costs. They promised that in 1976. We've never gotten more than 22%. And so Val, how much of our budget do we spend every year on what I think are morally imperative special education services, but that come from the general fund?
About 5.3 million.
So a little more than 10% of our annual expenditure budget. So when we talk about talking with our federal legislators, the single best thing that they could do to support public education would be to fully fund IDEA, which is the special education law. So thank you for teaming that up because it's important that we remember that. We're grateful for this one-time exception, hopefully become a two-time exception. But this is an ongoing issue that is not going to go away.
Well, and I appreciate your comments, Dr. Hillman, because if, if it's $5 million in Northfield, you have to start thinking about what that is statewide. And I believe it's at 750 million statewide, which eclipses the amount of money we get from the legislators every year. So it, it's a daunting number and it's only as, as Sarah has, has said, it's, you know, it's increasing. It's, it's not a number that is not increasing. So again, these services are absolutely the right thing to do for our students and our students thrive so well in our district when they get the services. And it's leaders like Cheryl Hall and yourself, Sarah, that, that really keep all of this working. And when you think 800 students that need IEP meetings in a short amount of time, just that alone is daunting. And the amount of other things that have to be done. So, so I, I appreciate that you come to the board with this request. I know you don't do it lightly. You don't just come to the board and say, oh, well, if we could have more people. It's, you know, it's something where the need is genuine. I also am happy to hear that you're looking at some other areas where you can, you know, that there can be some efficiencies. We need our teachers focusing on their students. And the amount of paperwork is incredible in terms of what has to be documented. And, and it's fine. That's, that's necessary, but it also takes our teachers away from serving our students. So I'm happy to hear that you're looking for some of those efficiencies. Val, I had a question, one question, and I'm glad, Tom, that you brought up the, the maintenance of effort. So in other words, the state doesn't know, well, I mean, not that we're trying to hide anything, but as far as accounting to the state, there would be no reporting of this to where a maintenance of effort issue isn't, I think you indicated is not.
Nope. It's, it's a non-issue. It's treated just like our other federal special ed dollars. So we get about 700,000, probably 800 when you include all four of them. And we code various things throughout the year to that. And that's, there's no maintenance of effort requirement with the federal funds.
Okay. And as a board, we appreciate Val, your work and really taking those federal dollars and putting them where they can really serve our students best. So thank you for doing that. So are there any other questions or comments? Okay. So we will address the hiring of this. Board members will have an opportunity to vote on that in items for individual action this evening.
Thank you. Thanks, Sarah. And your kind words.
So we will move on now to, Dr. Hillman is going to present always the much anticipated state of the district. As a reminder to board members, his presentation was in the table file. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, good evening. Move my presentation to the monitor here. So I'm excited to share this with the board this evening. Of course, I will also be sharing it. One of the highlights that we have every year is to present this at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, which will be on this Wednesday. So we're very excited about that. And you're really getting a preview and we may even make a few changes based on your feedback here this evening. So thank you for allowing me to present this. And it's an interesting, we've had a couple of, I, I think back to the previous state of the district presentations up until last year. And last year's was obviously, you know, very much out of the normal. We really focused on how we were responding to the pandemic at that point. We conducted that one virtually. The first one, I'm really thrilled to be doing this in person this Wednesday. It's excellent. And so, but again, we have another state of the district that is impacted by what we have all been dealing with for the last 18 months. So what I have done is I have organized this presentation under our five strategic commitments. And I'm limiting because as you know, you give me a microphone and to talk about the district and we could be here for a little bit of time. So I'm going to do my best to keep moving here. So we always start with our vision and we are unequivocally committed to our vision. And it's that we will prepare every student for lifelong success within a world-class learning environment with a commitment to community partnerships and sustainability. And you notice that we underline the word every. And when this was written in 2016, that was done very intentionally because when we say every, we mean every. And we want to think about each individual child to the best of our, there's times where we talk about every, there's times that we talk about all. We both focus on the individual and the collective. And so we always re-center ourselves around the vision. As I mentioned, we have five strategic commitments. This is really kind of evolved out of our former belief statements. So we think about people and we are a people business, right? We serve human beings. And when we talk about people, we're talking about all the people that we serve. We're talking first and foremost about our students. We are talking about our staff who serves our students. We're talking about our parents and our community as well. When we talk about learner outcomes, we are talking about the traditional learner outcomes that a lot of people think about, the academic outcomes. But we are all also continuing to look at things like social emotional learning and other kinds of non-academic outcomes because we do believe that the social is as important in the act as the academic, as people are growing and developing. Stewardship, we talk about stewardship in both ways. We talk about it being good stewards of the resources, the financial resources that our community has entrusted with, us with. And we are also talking about stewardship of the time that we have. We have students for 173 days. We want to make sure that we make the most of all of those days. When we talk about stewardship, we're talking about both the financial resources, we're talking, well, financial resources. We are talking about our human resources. And of course, we are also talking about making sure that what we do in the district is sustainable. Northfield is a unique district in the level of partnerships that we have. This is not, we, we have an unbelievable level of partnerships within our community. Starts with our colleges and of course with our local business community, with local faith-based organizations, with some philanthropic organizations and service organizations like the Healthy Community Initiative. And finally equity. And we're, as we talk about equity, we're talking about making sure that every student gets what they need to be able to pursue their dreams and be successful in life. And so when we talk about people, these are those four wonderful student speakers. If you gotta just, you just can't look at that photo and not be happy, right? I mean, what a great picture. And I'm not saying that just because I took it, but I think it's a great picture, right? So you're going to see, so when we think about the successes of the last year, when we think about the historic, once in a hundred year time that we had to respond to a pandemic, we look at the 2020, 21 school year. I am not going to go through all the data because I've shared it with you multiple times before. And for the predicament that we were in last year and the feedback that we got, it was very hard. There's no question. It has been incredibly excruciatingly difficult for everyone. But when we look back at how we handled last year, how we handled multiple learning models, how we handled regular changes to what we are expected from the state, I think overall, we look at it and we say, okay, we had a lot of challenges, right? But we feel that we came through it in a way that was as good as it possibly could have been and, and better than a lot of our neighboring districts as well. And so we look at the successes that we had with the coronavirus response last year. And that goes into communication. I think one of the things that we did very well in the data, I've shared that data with you before, the data clearly supports it, is how we communicated at an entire new level with our community last year. And what we knew, what we always know, and what was even more important last year, that communication needs to be clear, concise, and it needs to be timely. And we did that through literally dozens of parent updates from both the district and the building level last year. And we received very high marks from our community on communication from last year. I'm also thinking a success, I think if you think back to August of 2020, I think people questioned, how many events are we going to be able to have, right? If you think about August, we didn't even have fall sports going yet. And the fact that we pulled off a significant portion of the fall season, it did end disappointingly that we weren't able to finish the postseason competitions. We ran a winter season. We ran a spring season. In our community, rock and roll revival is a huge thing and we were able to pull that off outside. Again, creative thinking and then of course, an in-person graduation. Again, I think if we think back to August of 2020, I think a lot of people would not have known what we could have done. So I, I do believe that those events were a success. And then moving to some more technical pieces, I am really pleased that we were able to come to an agreement with the Northfield Education Association so early this summer. I'm going to count that as part of the 2020, 21 successes. We have had a long and very healthy relationship with the Northfield Education Association. The fact that we settled our contract well before others had even started it, that we had something that was a very modest increase, but also I think some really creative thinking about modernizing the leave language for our teachers. And I think that that's a testament to the way that we have worked together. The challenges, when we think about the challenges, of course, as moving ahead, the COVID-19 response is a huge challenge. We have a very, in fact, I think some people might think, well, we've got a year of this and we've got vaccination. We have a number of other tools, but I'll tell you is that I was just with about 200 of my superintendent colleagues at our state superintendent conference. And to a person, this year is more complicated in many ways than last year. When there isn't a statewide set of guidelines and when every school district is having to make their own decisions, you create a patchwork of policies that becomes frustrating for people. And I understand and share that same frustration with a lot of people in terms of how we're having to respond to this, this year, when we all thought we were done. And it's a patchwork of policies across the entire state. And we are continuing to learn more, which does create nuances. That's far more nuanced this year than it was last year. So those challenges continue and in many ways are more complicated than they've been in the past. We also have just seen a tremendous amount of fatigue. We are all tired. We are tired of this, right? We are tired of having to be patient until this thing is over. We are tired and we are fatigued of all the changes. That is a challenge and it is real. And so while many people can put on a happy face and are sincere in their altruism of doing really good work for kids, I think our community and our society is fatigued. And we have to understand that and we have to lean into it and it requires more grace. It requires more, a deep, more deep development of relationships. And one of my goals is for us to be able to help our community come through this as best we can. And that fatigue does impact mental health. We know that mental health is, for every individual person, their own individual mental health is in a very different way, right? It manifests itself in a variety of different ways. And I'm very pleased that we, we are supporting our, our students and our families in a number of different ways because of some of the federal funding through having a, a non-therapeutic life coach who is, we're experimenting with that to see sometimes people just need to talk to someone. They don't need to talk to a therapist, but they need to talk with someone to work through a problem. We know that there are wonderful therapists in our community, but it can be very difficult to determine where to go next. Who do I have an appointment with? And so we hired a, we call a mental health navigator to try to be able to work with families who might need therapy and make connections so that they can help them find an appointment in the community as needed. So we're working on it, but it takes, this is a community, a state, and a societal piece. And so that fatigue and our mental health issues are real. And that leads into that challenge of re-engagement. People had a whole bunch of different things that they did last year. We had some kids who did, you know, they stayed home the entire year. We had some kids who were home part of the year, came in for part of the year, our families. Some people had job changes. Some people worked from home. Some people had interrupted jobs, depending on what service industry they worked in. And so that re-engagement, trying to come back to re-engage is a challenge, right? Because we had 18 months or about a year of, a year to 18 months of some very different things. And so schools are not immune to that. So the challenge of re-engagement is real. Let's move on to learner outcomes. And so despite the most unusual year and I hope in my entire career, we did some really good things. And when we go back to thinking about one of the key aspects of us addressing the unacceptable achievement and opportunity gap in Minnesota, we have focused wholeheartedly on early learning. Because we know if kids can be ready for kindergarten, our data shows we can get you ready as you move through our K-12 system. So under the leadership of Erin Bailey, our early ventures program and our preschool program that's all how is now at the Northfield Community Education Center through that vision of a one-stop shop. You heard just a few meetings ago, 100% of the students entering kindergarten last year who went to early ventures were deemed ready for K by our district assessment process. And it's the most diverse pre-K program in the district. So what that's saying is it's working, right? In terms of the work that we've done within early ventures and then also it was the, as a cohort, it was the most prepared kindergarten class that we had had on record. And that goes to the partnership that we had with our in-home daycares, with our other community center-based daycares. And so that really gives us, it shouldn't just give us hope. That is achieving some of the big goals that we have set for ourselves despite having these disruptions. You heard from our elementary science professionals the last time. And despite a, a year where they weren't here in person all year, they held their own in terms of the fifth grade science MCA results, which you'll be hearing when we do the world's best workforce. And so that change in science, we know made a significant difference. That hands-on evidence-based curriculum is a big deal. Finally, the new skills. So I think that we often are looking at what did, what, and I'm going to talk about this twice, but so students learned a whole bunch of new skills that are going to make them career and college ready. While we all would prefer to be in person every day, we know that remote work is going to be part of the business community. It's, it's, it's there, right? We all read the stuff about leasing of space and we talked to graduates who are working remotely in professional positions. So even though it was very difficult, there were a lot of skills that our students learned through remote work, about remote work and about how to interact in those environments that are something that are going to prepare them for lifelong success. Probably in a way that wouldn't have happened otherwise. So those new skills that we can't measure, that we don't have a measurement for yet are things that we will learn how much they will pay off for our students in the long run. When we think about challenges, we often hear about the learning loss that happened. We try to take a little bit of a different approach of it. We're looking at the challenge of academic acceleration. For those students who do need to have some acceleration, what are the strategies that we're using to do that? And we are working through that through a different way that we did summer, what would be considered a summer school as a on-ramp to the school year as opposed to an off-ramp partnering with our extended school year program, really thinking holistically about our summer programs and then about our after-school programs during the year. And so thinking about what are the core skills that people need and how do we make sure that we are using all of the tools that we have to accelerate our students' academics? That includes reducing class size at the elementary school, adding guidance counselors at the secondary to help students through those things that are preventing them from accelerating as quickly as they might be able to. I think the other challenge, which is again, goes back to that new skill piece and it's totally normal, right? We grieve for the things that we lost. And there's a perception of loss, right? There's a perception of academic loss. There's a perception of a number of other pieces that are lost. And I think one of the challenges that we have is to continue to look at how do we leverage this terrible situation for our kids and us as humans to learn. So there's a perception of loss. We lost things. But there are also a number of things that people learned and that will take with them for the rest of their lives. This may be the next group that is called the greatest generation. Right? We, we often venerate the greatest generation who made so many sacrifices in a very difficult time during World War II. And when I talk to my family members who went through that, very difficult. Lot of things that were disrupted. But they look at that as a seminal moment in American history of how it prepared us to take off and the advances that we had post-World War II. I'm not foolish enough to say that this is the same thing. What I'm saying is that it is a mass disruptive event. And when we look at history, massive disruptive events are followed by typically significant acceleration in science, in societal development. And so a challenge that we all have is to reframe how we look at this in some ways. We need to honor the loss. We did lose things. Right? We lost people, we lost events. We, there's no, we have to honor and own it, right? We have to name it. But then we have to also look at what are the things that we have gained and how will that impact us over the next two decades? And I think that that's an important challenge for all of us to accept. When we think about stewardship, our successes, because we have been so focused on financial management for a long time, we had financial stability despite the uncertainty. I wish I could give you our fund balance number tonight. But we're not quite there yet. The audit is this week, so we'll have that for you very soon. We did have judicious use of federal funds. You heard that we've used federal funds for a lot of different things. But we also reserved a tremendous amount of our federal funds to be able to get through because we're able to spend those for a couple of years. So you're going to hear districts who have put all of that money on the table already. And we have reserved well over a million dollars to be able to address things that come up that we could not anticipate and provide some budget stability, which we think is important. Also, as you know, the legislature passed some things around solar legislation for schools. So it's a good time to remind you that this, we've been doing this for a long time. We've been using the Xcel Energy Renewable Connect Program. So 100% of the electricity that our schools use every day for the last several years comes from renewable resources. But we don't have to own all the equipment. We don't have to do the operational maintenance and things like that. Xcel Energy takes care of that for us. We're earning the credits in the back half of the contract. They retire the credits and our electricity bills will go down. And so we want folks to know that we have been talking about sustainable energy for quite some time. Stewardship challenges, we all know the story about state funding. A historic investment is what we're told, and yet we still didn't even get an inflationary increase. And I will leave it at that tonight because you know how I feel about that. Also, we have a challenge coming up this year in the fact that we have to rethink how we budget. The state is not living up to its means. You heard about our special education cross-subsidy. There are other cross-subsidies and other important areas where we are required to provide services, but don't get full funding. And so Director for Finance, Val Murdo, for that, we've been working on strategic planning and this winter, we plan to do something that we call a five-year priority-based budget. In which we intend to build a budget from the ground up that is designed to be sustainable for five years on our own, live within our means. While also making sure we prioritize the things that the community through the board say are the most important for us to do. And if we really think about organizational excellence, your budget should be a reflection of your strategic priorities. I would argue ours is in a lot of ways. But we have to be more intentional about it because we have to rebuild that budget with a five-year goal in mind. We have not made budget reductions in 11 years. I challenge you to find three other school districts that can say that. And, but we have to think about it differently. So when I tell people we're going to do this, they say, good luck with that. So, but we like a good challenge. So we're going to try it because we think that it's important to be able to have that five-year lens. It shows to our community that we are serious about stewardship. Partnerships, you can't say enough about Northfield Promise. Right? We've talked to you many times before about how they have supported us during the pandemic in a variety of different ways, most notably putting together what I think is one of the most creative partnerships around in terms of making sure that every student had access to not just the internet, but quality internet so they could interact with their score. Northfield Hospital and Clinics won the Friend of Education from the Northfield Education Association for their support of us during the pandemic, their support of us in terms of advising us on the appropriate safety measures. What's the current health condition in the community? And then of course, prioritizing our educators for vaccination last January, February and March. Rice County Public Health, Sarah Colter from Rice County Public Health is someone who has I consider to be a personal friend and I only met her in person three weeks ago. Because during the whole time we had talked on the phone or video conference, and so Rice County Public Health has really just done an excellent job for us. They have been there for us, whatever we've needed. They have assisted us, advising us to the best of their ability in these unusual times. What are the challenges? Again, many schools are not even bringing volunteers back. We know how important volunteerism is in our community. So we have been trying to work to bring volunteers back. We do have a vaccine requirement for them to protect them. We have a number of elderly volunteers. We also have a number of college volunteers. So in that area, we have a vaccine requirement for those people to be able to volunteer. And it's to protect both of them and to make sure that the environment that we have is as safe as it practically, practicably can be at this point, but that is a challenge because we still have some people who are great volunteers who aren't quite ready to come back. We also know that people have a different, as people want to volunteer, there's a variety of reasons why they might not be able to yet. So we're very happy to have that partnership with the colleges, with our retirees in the community. But we rely a lot on volunteers for a world-class education and we are, that's coming back, but it's not quite there yet. We'll continue to work to navigate that because we have a community who does want to help out. In the area of equity, our successes, we're really looking at that anti-racism framework last year, thinking about symbolism, individual behavior and systemic behavior. And the work that we did on symbolism last year was important. And so when we think about that anti-racism framework, it really organizes our thoughts around it. We continue training for our staff. We did that in-house last year. And then a community coalition, we've developed a community coalition that involves our, the city of Northfield, it involves HCI, it involves people from all sorts of different organizations within the community who are coming together to saying, we need to make sure that Northfield is a special place for everyone. And so right now that group is looking at things like housing. They're looking at making sure that we are truly a welcoming community. They're looking at supporting businesses as they continue to be as welcoming as we possibly can. And of course, then that also works with the Northfield Anti-Racist Coalition, another grassroots group that is working to make sure that every Northfielder is welcomed and valued. And this is really critical work. So we had a lot of successes in framing that last year. The photo is just from last week as a matter of fact. And it was that Northfield Racial and Ethnic Equity Coalition. This particular one was around a welcoming community and how can we get a baseline of, of what we know about how welcoming Northfield is. And again, an inter-agency group. What are the challenges we think about equity? The challenges are maintaining momentum. Unfortunately, we've seen these kinds of movements before where they stall out because people become tired, right? They, we haven't, this is, this is work you gotta dig in for and it's gonna, it comes in very small steps. We'd all like the grand slam, but we are getting it in small steps. So the challenge is to make sure that we are maintaining momentum. The other challenge that we continue to face statewide is what I would call both misinformation and some active disinformation. So as schools and as communities have continued to work on making sure that we are talking about educational equity for everyone, which means that we are committed to giving every student what they need to be successful. There is some coordinated efforts across the state to disrupt that work by spreading misinformation and even some cases, disinformation. And it's very disheartening. In fact, it's so disheartening that eight statewide educational agencies came together. And this is a group of people who very rarely sign their name to the same document. It included the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, the Minnesota School Boards Association, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts Education, Minnesota, the Minnesota Association of School Business Officials, the Secondary School Principals Association, the Elementary School Principals Association, and the Minnesota Administrators for Special Education came together and wrote a joint statement. You know, talking about how we need to make sure that this work is not being mislabeled. And that this is really, at the end of the day, about basic human decency. And making sure that we have a fair chance for every student to pursue the American dream. And so the work that we are going to do is to continue to remove barriers, to continue to make sure that we support every student in whatever way that we can. And so those are the challenges that we face when it comes to equity over the next year. Give me a second, here we go. So finally, I thought I'd throw a few achievements in there because it's always good to talk about achievements. We had two of our employees who were recognized as the best in their field in the state. Our own Anita Ozzy was recognized by her organization as a superintendent support personnel for their annual recognition of the year. So congratulations again to Anita, outstanding. We all know that she makes me look very good. And then Nancy Antoine, of course, with the distinguished, the National Distinguished Principal Award from Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association. She'll actually be going to Washington DC here in a couple of weeks to receive her award. We'll be doing some recognition of her when she returns. We're still figuring that part out. When we think about our students and the accomplishments that they've had, as a superintendent, you gotta love saying, we're the knowledgeable state champs, right? That's pretty awesome. You gotta love that. And then our bowling team, state champions, and of course Nate Stevens won the individual medal for boys golf last year and he'll be golfing at Notre Dame moving ahead. Some local recognition, our Educational Assistant to the Year Teresa Finley, an amazing, an amazing educator at Northfield Middle School. A true person who focuses on what the kids need and what do I need to do for them. And Heather Olivier, our orchestra teacher, who's the teacher of the year. Again, you think about how she has developed that program and it's just truly amazing. One of the special things we have. And then despite all the challenges of the pandemic, an organization called the Campaign for Grade Level Reading. So this is a group that focuses on grade level reading across the country. And they identified around 50-some communities that they said were bright spots for continuing to focus on literacy and having some literacy achievement gains during the pandemic. And so Northfield is the only community in Minnesota to receive that, that distinction. And it's not just the school districts, it's about the community effort around literacy. So those are a handful of achievements. So there's a lot to celebrate. Despite all of the challenges that we face, we did have a lot of accomplishments. We also have challenges ahead of us that I don't think we ever could have thought that we'd be facing in our career. And I consider it our life's work. This is the biggest contribution that we're going to be able to make in my career in terms of how we help emerge from these issues. And so I feel privileged to do this work in this community. I look forward to presenting this again to the Chamber of Commerce, a little bit expanded format on Wednesday, but I'd be happy to answer any board members' questions at this time.
Excellent. Thank you. Board members, questions, comments? No.
Dr. Hillman, thank you for your update. I particularly applaud the district's leadership to engage in all caregivers of the children. Because ultimately, they all come through the same funnel. And we need to be ready for them when they do. And we, thank you for your, your leadership's cooperation with that.
My pleasure. No, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Hillman. What I really appreciated about this, and I think it's, it's sort of when the, the science specialist came and presented, it just is such a wonderful feeling of knowing and, and recapping everything that has happened over the year. And you did it in a way that just expressed the optimism and the forward thinking that we all share about where we're moving and how we're moving forward. But it's important to reflect on where we've been. And you're right. I mean, COVID-19 has dominated every meeting, every conversation, you know, lots of communication with parents was around that. And so to be able to, to pull this together and, and I thank you for the depth of the report and really thinking about what we were able to achieve. And it's, it's phenomenal. And we'll continue to move forward. And I think it's important to acknowledge how how exhausted everyone is and the toll that it has taken, but also your optimistic approach about how our students will come out of this stronger and, and hopefully with, with a lot of the help that we know they need, we'll all move forward as a community together. So really excellent report, comes at a very good time for all of us to just reflect on on where we've been and where we're moving forward. So thank you so much for that. And I, I know board members will be at the Chamber of Commerce, those who are able to be there on Wednesday and we'll look forward. I think the community will really appreciate this report and, and to understand, you know, that we recognize the impact it's had on students, but also the work that we've been able to do. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Excellent. Okay. Good stuff. So let's move on to a little bit more mundane, but equally is important as our policy committee recommendations. We are always grateful to our policy committee for their work and them surf, and their work to surface policies for us to review and, and important changes that need to be made. So this is the first reading on policies 102, 406 and 413. They were all in your packet. We can, I'll ask for questions from board members. If there's multiple questions on a, on a policy, we can maybe choose to segment a policy initially. So is there any questions anyone has on the policies? Claudia?
Okay, so on policy 102, at the end of it, it refers to a district human rights officer. And when I follow the link, it takes us to the human resources page. In another policy, Molly is outlined as the contact for Title IX. And I wondered if that wording from a parent looking to pursue the human, the human rights officer, I may not automatically find them on that website with four persons listed.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you for that feedback, Claudia, and we'll take a look at, we've been trying to standardize on linking. And of course, Molly Beasley, who's our Director of Human Resources, also serves as our Human Rights Officer and our Title IX Coordinator. What I'm hearing you suggest is that we just maybe block that and put her name there within the policy.
Well, yeah, and then the link, if I follow the link, I'm not necessarily going to find the human rights officer.
Yeah, it's at the bottom of, unfortunately, we aren't able to directly link to the section. The section on Title IX and human rights officers at the bottom of their page. And the way that the website works, we're not able to link directly to what they call an accordion, we're not able to directly link to the accordion. But we could put some directions there.
Is the Title IX person usually the human rights?
Depends on the size of your district. And so in a district our size, very common to have the human rights officer also be the Title IX officer.
Maybe just here, the human rights officer slash Title IX.
We absolutely can do that.
And then I had one more question on this particular policy. In, on some equal employment opportunity sites, the definition of sexual harassment is quite lengthy. And I'm wondering if you could speak about why ours is quite short, I think there was
Yes.
three or four bullet points?
Yes, happy to talk about that. So I think the key thing is that, first of all, I want to frame that the three policies we're looking at tonight, we're making the recommended changes by the School Boards Association based on new legislation. And then in addition, what you're talking about is highlighted in Policy 413. And, right, and so we're linking to that rather than repeat what it says in 413. So that's why there's more brevity in the equal education opportunity policy.
Thanks Claudia, those were really good comments. Other questions or comments? Tom?
Just a minor thing in 406. You cross out the word creates and purpose under purpose. But in Section 2, you have all data collected, created, you have the word created there. Does that need to be crossed out too?
Which section are you talking about, Tom, for the second one?
In 406, I, and then Section 2II. The very first sentence says all data about individuals collected, created, received. It's like created is the wrong word again.
Yeah, we will check on that. They, they, again, these are the statutory, or the changes in statute. And once in a while, you will see something come out of the initial portion at the top and remain in the more specified area because there is time when data is created. They pulled it from the purpose statement, which is more of the overarching part. But when you look at the spots that you're looking at, there is time where data is created within the district and then it's governed by whether it is public or private for personnel data. So I think that the second created is appropriate. I think we were actually probably wordsmithing that purpose statement because it's the overarching piece of the policy. I, I do believe, Tom, that that second created is appropriate.
But somehow the word creates data out of thin air? Seems wrong, or it seems odd.
Okay. So you're talking about, yep, I see where you're talking about. We will, we can go back and ask the School Boards Association why they didn't, again, these policies were changed specific to some legislation that took place. And so we can ask why that wasn't changed in that second spot. But data is created in terms of about, when we create, for example, when we have a new employee, we create data about them in terms of their employee ID number, we create that, we create their email. Those are the kinds of things that we'd be creating, just a couple of examples. And that's why I think that create remains something that's appropriate in that list. But we can certainly talk with Dr. Morrow from the School Boards Association and bring that question forward.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I have a question about Policy 413, it's somewhat of an overarching question. So one thing that I hadn't seen as a term that I thought I had seen before is protected class. So, so I see here that we, we cross off, you know, the, the usual violence based on race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, age, marital status, familial, familial status, status with regard to public assistance, you know, etc. So a number of, of things listed there. And so we are now saying it's protected class. And I understand this did come from MSBA, so there's reasons for that. But wondered if you have any more information to share with us about what protected class is? It seems to make sense in that it's a, it's an overarching sort of way to delineate all of the different categories, categories, excuse me, and not leave any out. So I think that's the first time we had seen that, or maybe I had missed it.
No, I think that you're right, Julie, this is a change that was recommended. And I think the key thing is that if you notice in the purpose statement, as you mentioned, you know, the delineation of all of the protected class groups is enumerated. And my sense of this is that because that section has changed with legislation, that rather than having to be able to change it, if you notice, it had been several other places within the policy. And so by making sure that you're defining it at the beginning and then using the term protected class throughout, you're not having to repeat and make sure that you make the changes in all of those other areas as we move on. So it's to be, to define it to begin with, and then to use that specific term that is two words versus the entire list of protected classifications.
Okay, yes, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. So within the purpose statement is protected class. Because actually, yeah, I mean, it's, it makes, it makes a lot of sense and we'll keep our, all of our policies. So I'm, I'm just assuming then we have any other policies where those type of, you know, delineations are made that we would just then insert protected class.
Yeah, and we'll, you know, we are continuing to do a number of different things with policy. Number one, we are, of course, this is the time of the year where we make a number of updates based upon what the legislature did. So when the legislature finalizes all of their items in, supposed to be in May, right? But a lot of years it's in June. Then what has to happen is they go to adjusting the policies based upon all that. So we usually get in August, the new list of updated polishers from MSBA. So we always start with those to try to make sure that we can get those moving. And we make the changes that they are requesting, we do rigorously review those changes. And then we are also trying to streamline our policies to have a similar style, if you will. So that when you look policy to policy, that it's fairly predictable about how things are going to look. One of the things that we're doing is along the same line of protected class of using the term once and then using, or defining the term once at the beginning and then using that term throughout rather than repeating for a number of different reasons.
Okay, that, that makes a lot of sense, thank you. Then one other clarification, I appreciate Claudia pointing this out. So Policy 413 is embedded, the link is embedded in Policy 402. So then once Policy 413 is updated, obviously that link is updated as well.
The goal is that the link stays the same and we just update the PDF behind it.
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, Claudia?
In this particular policy, Section 2 Letter D, would that be an appropriate place to talk about the timeline? It says the district will act to investigate all complaints. And it goes on to describe, but it doesn't talk about a timeline when, is that an appropriate place to talk about within 10 days or whatever the?
Let me just make sure we're talking, you're talking about 413 again now?
Yes, 413, Letter D.
Okay, let me just get back there. 413, Letter D. So Claudia, there is a, there is a set of procedures that go with this particular document. So the way we have typically done this is the policy is the broad overview and then, and that's what is adopted by the board. And then the procedures define those timelines and things like that. So we don't typically have the board approve the procedures, they're more of an administrative piece. The timelines are outlined in the procedures.
Okay, I, I thought I did see something about certain number of business days.
Right, and it's very extensive in terms of very, very prescriptive in how long and what the investigation process looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks for those great questions, Claudia. Any other questions or comments on these three policies? Okay, again, this was a first reading, so we will approve these at our October 11th board meeting. So we can move on now to Superintendent Operations and COVID-19 Update, Dr. Hillman.
Yes, very briefly, what I've included in this week's update is the data from Rice County. And you'll see that unfortunately, we had another week where we saw an increase in the cases in Rice County in the last reporting period through September 18th, 167. And so I'll also highlight that as of September 22nd, the district had a total of 19 positive COVID-19 cases, we're up to 23 as of today. And of course, want to point out that we do update that dashboard regularly. And so people can, who have an interest can take a look at the dashboard. We talk about how quarantine has been much less in terms of those people considered close contacts. It's a much more nuanced scenario this year because we are not having to quarantine as many people. But again, the reduction in that quarantine number is due to the universal masking piece. But what I just want to share is that despite the reduction, quarantine's difficult, right, if it's, even if you reduce it, right, which we are working again to try to reduce it even further. But what I just need the board to know is quarantine is difficult for every single family. As has been mentioned earlier, a lot of the federal programs designed to support people last year have sunset. And so what I want the board to know is that we're serious about trying to make sure that we continue to reduce quarantine. We are looking at some additional measures that would allow us to do that. We're not quite ready to share that yet, but we are working on it this week. We're looking at making sure we can balance that, reduce, we want uninterrupted in-person learning. We're trying to maintain that people are in the building to the best of our ability, while also making sure that the environment is still as safe as practical. It's that continual balance about making sure that we keep this out to the best of our ability. But quarantine is more, even though it's far fewer students, it is more impactful, it's even more impactful this year, I believe, to other, to many families because of the changes that the supports that were there before are no longer there. So it is very difficult, but I want to assure the board and the community that we continue to explore ways where we can reduce quarantines while also making sure that we are protecting the collective student and community health. Two items I want to share, bright spot, our Hispanic Parent Advisory Committee. So we have a long history of engaging our Hispanic parents. And in the spirit of continuous improvement, we've continued an ongoing parent advisory committee. We conduct committee meetings via Zoom, they're scheduled for three times a year, we held one on September 20th. We had 13 parents attend, it was awesome. And of course, it's, it is translated, Marbel DeCanto does the live translation for me. And Child Nutrition Director Stephanie Stormy was there, a lot of questions about the food service program. Just, it was delightful, questions asked and answered, and some real gratitude from our Hispanic Parent Advisory Committee. And then just also give you an update on the anti-racism and equity train that we have for teachers this year through our professional learning community sessions, we had our first one last week. We are partnering with Equity Alliance Minnesota, as we have had for many years, partnering with them. And we are specifically looking at equity practices within our instructional models. So ensuring that we are looking at the teaching methods that we are using and are they really designed to make sure that every student can succeed? So we are excited to work on that this year. So that is the update for this time.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, comments? Amy?
So I may be asking you a question you can't answer. But could you give me an idea of, you know, the difference in quarantine numbers? So this year we have 23 people.
Since August 31st, yeah.
Since August 31st, and maybe, I know you won't probably know the exact numbers, but how many people got quarantined off of those compared to if we had had 23 people a year ago? And how many people would?
Right, so I'll give you the elementary, I'll give you the elementary approach, which is last year, because we were fully in-person at the elementary for the vast majority of the year. Because of the way that elementary classrooms work, last year typically, if we, unless the student wasn't there, if we had a positive case in an elementary classroom, that entire elementary classroom shifted to distance learning for a period of, most of the time, 10 days, depending on testing is interesting because it's about when you get the results and then how, when was that person last year? Who was with that person when they were last here? So you'd think every quarantine situation is exactly the same, there are no two that are the same, they're all different. But last year, we would have typically sent that entire classroom home because of the way that elementary classrooms work. With the change in the CDC recommendation where as long as everyone is masked, you don't have to quarantine those students, or they don't recommend that you quarantine those students. We are seeing, instead of a class of 20 or 22, you're seeing a maximum of four, maybe five students. And really, it comes down to some issues at lunch, or we're still refining how we can make sure that we are making lunch, even in a better way where we don't have to do any quarantine if there were students eating at the same table for lunch for 15 more minutes or more unmasked. So that's the difference in one elementary classroom. The secondary, I think it would even be less. And last year, if you think about it, you'd do six feet around each of the secondary students for seven class periods. Then you have to ask about lunch. So I think our, we had one last year where there are probably 30-some students, you know, who were quarantined as a result. This year, we have the secondary students, the first question that we look at is, are the close contacts vaccinated? That's the first question, because if they're vaccinated, then they don't need to quarantine. So they have the second, many of, not all, many of the secondary students have another layer of protection that doesn't require them to quarantine if they were vaccinated. And then we go to the masking component. And specifically at the high school, because of the flex period and because of the way people are able to spread out during the building and just the way that kids operate at lunch at the secondary, we're seeing even less quarantine there.
That's great, and so do you have a sense of how many people have been quarantined this year then?
I don't have a total number.
Okay.
It's far less than it was, like I, like I mentioned, if you've got one case, that typically would have been 20 kids at an elementary level, you're down to four or five, but I want to come back to that. This is one of those times where you talk about the collective versus the individual, right? So we can look at the collective number and we can say, oh, great, that's great, there's lots less, you know, a lot of less kids who are having to do that. At the same time, every single person who has to quarantine, that is a serious issue for their families, especially our elementary students. So in our spirit of continuous improvement, we are continuing to look for ways where we can reduce that even further.
When students are quarantined, do they have the option of any sort of online learning at that point?
So not in the same way we did last year. So typically, it would be worked like they would, it would have been if they had been ill previously. So we have the digital tools that we're using and teachers are certainly expected to work with those students, but it is not the same as last year.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Well, thank you, I appreciate you walking through the quarantine piece because it is very complex.
Yes.
Just trying to figure out how students are moving through the building, particularly at lunch. You can look at a lunch schedule and think that the train ran on time, but maybe it didn't. And all of those factors that have to be determined. And I appreciate that, you know, we are looking at some potential new ways of, of trying to limit quarantining even further.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that great work. The command team assembled of public health and administrators and representatives from teachers, students that are really trying to, to understand how we can continue to move forward and particularly on the quarantine issue. So we'll look forward to, to hearing how that, how that might move us forward in quarantining less students. So, so thanks for the update on that. Let's move on now to talking about bright spots and fun presentations. We always look forward to our District Youth Council update. And we welcome this year's new co-chairs, Amelia Arnold and Sylvie Hanson. So welcome you two. Welcome to the, to the, to the new co-chairs, we appreciate you being here tonight and we look forward to your presentation. As board members know, it is in our packet, so welcome.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Just step in a little bit, Sylvie, there you go, perfect.
There we go. Okay, hello everyone, my name is Sylvie Hanson, this is Amelia Arnold, we're both seniors at the high school currently. And we are also the co-chairs of the District Youth Council this year. Hi, everyone, thank you so much for having us tonight. We are very excited to share with you what the DYC is all about and to recap what we accomplished last year and some goals from the, for the upcoming school year. But before we get started, I'm going to talk a little bit about our history within the DYC. So we both started in 10th grade, where everyone starts if you join. I was part of the Communications and Connections Subcommittee. And I was part of the Mental Health Subcommittee. And then from there, in 11th grade, we were both Subcommittee Leaders. I was a Subcommittee Leader for Connections and Communications. And I was the leader for the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. And now we, now here we are this year, co-chairs of DYC and excited to give back to a group that we care so much about. All right. All right, so to start off tonight's presentation, I'm going to give you a little overview of what DYC is and what it's all about.
So to start off tonight's presentation, I'm going to give you a little overview of what DYC is and what it's all about. So the DYC is here to foster connections between the school board administration and the student body. That means we pride ourselves on working to make the policies and decisions the school board makes easier for students to understand, bringing up issues from the student body to the administration and leading product, projects to improve life within the school. Moving on to our subcommittees, there are two this year, which are the connections and communications subcommittee led by seniors Simon McDonald and Julia Peterson. And the equity and inclusion subcommittee led by juniors Grace Riden and Ananda Meant. The connections and communications subcommittee works on anything relating to fostering relations between all three parts of the district. They also handle the DYC Instagram and last year they worked on the DYC website that had a lot of COVID information for the district. The equity and inclusion subcommittee is all about fostering change within the district to make sure it is an equitable place for all students.
So now on to our meeting schedule, we meet twice a month on Wednesdays. The first meeting is on the second Wednesday of the month. And the main focus for this one is for all the subcommittees to work together in person on their projects. We will also recap any school board meetings that have happened since the last meeting that we had or any district committee meetings that we've had. The second meeting is on the fourth Wednesday of the month, and that is where we meet with Dr. Hillman and our school board liaison Julie Pritchard to recap school board meetings. And again, just to overview what each subcommittee is currently working on within the district. Moving on, everyone in our DYC committee works on just several different district committees. We have our members serve on these different district committees to further our mission statement of trying to connect with the district. This year, we're serving on six district committees. There are the Northfield Forward, the Policy Committee, Finance Committee, Facilities Committee, Equity Committee, and finally, the Wellness Committee. We feel that these committees really gain from youth voices and we know that everyone is excited to participate in them again this year.
All right. So a little bit of what we did last year, a big highlight for our group was the art. When we created our, the land acknowledgement for the school districts, the equity and inclusion subcommittee. We, we spoke to Carlton professors, did a lot of online research and worked with the district policy committee to form a land acknowledgement that was then passed by the school board early this summer.
Hey, and looking ahead, looking ahead now, we're going to talk about the projects that our two subcommittees are proposing and going to try and accomplish this year. For the connections and communications subcommittee, they hope to host some movie nights or game nights for students at the high school. They also want to host another school board and DYC brunch, hopefully earlier in the, earlier in the year. And then the last idea that they had was to set up a care package system that students could send to their friends. They'll be able to write little notes and put candy in them and send them out during the school day. And then for equity and inclusion, they want to partner up with the Black Student Union at the high school and host discussion about equity within the district. And after the discussion, they want to send out a survey to students within the district, asking them about equity and any improvements that they think that should be, happen within our district. And then they also want to host a sort of culture night with the Rotary students that are here currently. Where Rotary students will be able to make presentations about their country and then present it and have discussion and that sort of thing.
And then finally, I am so excited to watch the DYC accomplish all of these projects this year. And I just wanted to say thank you so much for having Sylvie and myself tonight. We really appreciate that you have, you had the time to hear a DYC presentation.
Yes, thank you so much. Amelia and I are both so excited to be co-chairs this year. And it really means a lot that we were able to share goals for this year with you all. Are there any questions or comments?
Excellent presentation. Thank you. It's always a highlight of our board meeting when we have our DYC students here. So thank you. Now, so board members, questions, comments for Sylvie and Amelia? Claudia?
Thanks for your presentation. That's terrific. How big is your, your council? And what is something that you enjoy about it?
So our council, we have us two as co-chairs and then we have the four subcommittee leaders. And then in each subcommittee, I think we have four and five.
Four or five, yeah.
In each of the two subcommittees. So yeah. And then one thing that I just love being about, being a part of the DYC is that it really gives me an opportunity. Because we do work on district committees to then share maybe a student opinion about something based on the committees that we've both been on. And I just really like working with all the students. All the students within the DYC are so amazing. And it's just always a great time. And yeah, I just really enjoy it.
I would second what Sylvie said. It's just really interesting and fun to be able to participate in our community. And I really cherish all of the work we do.
Other questions, comments? Amy?
I just have a comment from the board perspective. Last year I had the pleasure of being on the policy committee when the land acknowledgement statement came through. And that was a really interesting process and a very important thing that the students brought to us and had us work through all the language and it took quite a bit of work and, and I really appreciate their efforts and I'm really happy about the result that came from it. And so thank you all for your work on that. And I also just want to say, I loved the school board brunch that we were able to do in 2020. It was like one of the last things that we did before COVID started. You just got in right under, you know, before the deadline and it was really fun. So I'm glad you're planning to do it again.
Thank you. We're definitely looking forward to it. Yeah.
Other questions, comments?
I'll second what everybody else said, but I appreciate the student perspective. And you often have very thought out, well thought out comments and that's and again, from a, from a student's perspective, it helps us to see what we're doing and how it's affecting you and vice versa. So thanks a lot.
Yes, of course. We really enjoy being a part of all those district committees and being able to like give that opinion. So thank.
Other questions, comments? Well, thank you, board members. So, so you see that we're really grateful for your work. Amelia, you forgot to mention that you are on the incident, incident command team, which meets at seven AM. And Amelia has never missed a meeting, even over the summer. So you're, and, and I think Tom, I really appreciated your, your comment because for all of us who serve on our district liaison committees, whether it's finance or community education or policy. You know, Northfield Forward, you really engage and give us really good feedback from a student perspective. And chatting with Amelia earlier, I think you really, you seem to, to undervalue what you contribute and that there's times incident command team when when Dr. Hillman will say, Amelia, how do you think students feel? And you just say, you say it so well. And often I think during the day, wow, Amelia's comment was really spot on. And we really feel like we get the student perspective when we talk to you. And, and Dr. Hillman and I have the distinct privilege of meeting with you on Wednesday mornings and, and the, and the excitement and the energy around wanting to do good work for your school is just really impressive and always a highlight of, of our month when we're able to do that. So appreciate you walking through the goals and really recapping. Again, tonight has just been, feels real celebratory in terms of what the district's been able to achieve. Despite the challenges of COVID-19 and particularly as students, all those meetings took place last year on Zoom. And I, I do appreciate that Amy talked about the land acknowledgement statement because it was really, really well done. And I know Amelia, you were the chair of that committee at the time and all of that work was done via Zoom last year. So you have to feel incredibly proud of that. So we know that your goals this year will be quite a lot easier to achieve. And we hope now traditionally you come back in the spring and give us an update. So we hope we can look forward to that this spring. So thank you.
Thank you so much. It's truly our pleasure. Thank you so much.
Good stuff. Thank you so much. Okay, we, that was the best for last in terms of our items for discussion and reports. So we'll move on now to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Tom. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on now to items for individual action. We have four this evening. Our first is action on grievance. I move to deny the grievance. Is there a second? Second by Noel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item for individual action is policy approval. Our first reading last week for policies or last meeting five to four point two and six sixteen that were presented at the September 13th board meeting. Is there a motion to approve those policies? Again, five to four point two and six sixteen as presented. Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item for individual action is our proposed 2021 payable 2022 property tax levy. Prior to asking for a motion, Val Murdistorf is here to present that. And as a reminder, there was a tax comparison document that was in our table file and Val's presentation is in the school board packet. So welcome, Val.
Thank you. See if this just changes automatically.
We'll switch it and then you can click the next button. It'll take you to the next.
All right. One giant slide. I like it. So I am presenting the preliminary levy certification. This is one step as part of our total process for this. So as a reminder, just what the levy is and what it does for us, it provides about 25% of our total general fund budget revenue. The other large portion of this levy is actually our debt service obligations. We are required by statute to levy 105% of our debt. That is the other large component. The levy has voter approved levies, which you can see later in the detail. Sixty-three percent of our total levy is voter approved, which is a testament to the supportive community that we have. And the other, the other revenue is state authorized levies that we are eligible for. And really this allows us to supplement the lack of state funding to provide the world-class learning environment that we strive for. So this is a timeline. Like I said, we're on step one tonight. Annually, we have certified or had you approve the max levy. And what that means is I pulled it up right, right before I came up here, the number that is in your presentation is already different. Not significantly, just a little bit. But it changes as the state is going through all of their calculations. And so when we certify at the max, what that says is when they finalize their calculations, whatever that dollar amount is, we can under levy between now and December, but we can't go higher than that. And so that gives us the most flexibility as a district to determine between now and December, if there's anything we need to change. Historically, we do not under levy or change anything. We've been very consistent to provide a consistent expectation for taxpayers as well. So we will certify this. It is due by Thursday. So upon approval tonight, we will, I will send it through to the county and to MDE and we'll get all of those pieces taken care of. And then the county takes all of that data and prepares the tax statements. They get mailed out in November and then we will come back at our December 13th meeting and have a truth in taxation meeting. That is a requirement from the state. We can have it as part of a normal board meeting. And then once we certify the final levy at that point, then the county takes that information and use your official tax statements. So as all things are in school district, it's complicated. This levy process is well in advance of when we actually get to use the revenue. So we are certified in the page 22 levy, which the counties will collect between January and December next year. We will get our first payments of that next May and June. But it is not revenue for us until the next school year. So the 22, 23 school year. So it's nice for budgeting because I already have a known in my budget. But it is a little difficult at this point to project some of those things that aren't advanced. So there is a three-year adjustment cycle as well to kind of true up some of the things that are estimated at this time. In terms of numbers, we have just over $20 million as our total levy. And the vast majority of that, the graph on the left is the total levy. So 14.5 million is the general fund. So seventy-one percent of that comes directly to the general fund. Again, that 14 million is 25% of our total general fund revenue. Twenty-seven percent is our debt service. Again, that's the state required 105%. The vast majority of our debt service is voter approved. And then community gets 2% for a few different formulas that are allowed through the state for them. And then the breakout just shows kind of what is made up in the general fund. Our voter approved referendum is about 7.5 million or 37%. We do have the capital projects fund, which is a voter approved capital projects levy of 750,000. You'll see that number is not $750,000 and I will talk about that in a minute. And then the general fund other, which apparently does not show up on the screen, but that is the other piece of that. And that is primarily all the state authorized. So this is, the numbers all broken out by fund, by truth and taxation category. So if it's voter approved or other, which is basically state authorized. And then by the various tax bases, the referendum market value is effectively only for the referendum. And that tax capacity is basically every other formula that we have. So I won't go into all the details about all those calculations. It is a 38-page, eight-point document that we go through, but 20.017 million. So we're about just, actually as of tonight, it was about $300,000. So we're at 1.5% decrease. Again, that is primarily related to our declining enrollment, which is consistent with what our demographic study has shown. We've been anticipating this and projecting it for several years now. And so that is playing out as we projected, which is good. Not good that we're losing revenue, but good that we were projecting it and planning for that. And then this is just kind of a line item to give you a little bit more in-depth about what's included in the general fund. So again, the referendum is that largest piece of it. And then some of the other state authorized pieces. And you can see the difference is negative in almost every single one of those categories. And that is because the vast majority of our revenue formulas are enrollment driven. There are a few other ones that are down for other reasons, but that is the, the main reason that we are seeing that. The one that I did want to call out is the adjustments. So you'll see that's up about 158,000. Again, that can swing from year to year. We try very hard to estimate our enrollment as close as possible and all of these other things so that we don't see large swings from year to year. This one is 100 and I noticed in my narrative, I put 112,000. It's actually 116,000. There was a clerical error at the county level on our page 21 levy that resulted in us getting an extra 116 it was about 150,000, but after they settled everything out, it's about 116,000 that they're actually reducing off this levy. So that's the bulk of that change. You can see it's very similar to the prior year if you exclude that. The audit is this week, so we have put 116,000 in deferred revenue because we got too much this year. The audit is this week. So we have put 116,000 in deferred revenue because we got too much this year. So then that'll get cleaned up next year with that reduction. So the $750,000 Capital Projects levy, all of those pieces are impacted. And so that small decrease is impacted from that. So. And then community ed is up a little bit and debt service is down. Overall, very consistent from year to year. But the tax impact statement in your table file was prepared by others as an estimate based on the current tax values that they have estimated. And it shows overall about a 7% decrease for property owners. For a $250,000 home, it's about $128 decrease per year. Very important disclaimer that that is assuming all things are held the same. So if your property value was exactly the same as it was last year, which it never is, your, your taxes would go down about 7%. But again, that will be different for every property based on their value as it relates to last year and the taxable market value for the district as a whole. This is just the levy trend to show historically that we have been very consistent. The pay 18 levy increase was the voter-approved increase to the operating referendum. My son had RSV last week, so we're recovering from that. So I apologize. I believe that is the bulk of the information. Again, 296,000 as of last week, 300,000 as of today. About 1.5% decrease over the prior year. And declining enrollments driving most of that and is consistent with what we've been projecting. And it's actually 116,112 is the general fund specific impact. So. I would welcome any questions that you might have about that.
Excellent. Thanks, Val. And always appreciate you including the narrative because that's actually how I follow all of this. So board members, questions, comments? Tom?
You really read all those pages in 8.5?
I did not read all of them. I know which numbers to look for now and which formulas to check that they got correct.
Has our district taxable market value gone up, down, and by how much?
It has gone up. I don't have the exact number, but I can grab it for you and get it to you for the end of the night. But I would say it's been averaging 5% to 7% a year.
Which is about the amount that our taxes were going down. Is that consistent or?
Um. Sorry. It, it ranges depending on the impact of everything. So because it's going up 7%, that helps to, to reduce because it's spread over a larger dollar value. But it's not necessarily directly correlated.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I had, well, one comment. So, so when we say we have a 1.46% decrease, so there's two other taxing entities. There's the county and the city. So, so as a taxpayer, we don't, you know, we don't know what the county and the city are going to do. So, so on a tax statement, they will see a, if, if this, you know, if we, you know, approve this, this preliminary levy and then we don't make any adjustments before December, that taxpayers see the school tax, but that there is two other taxing entities for our district taxpayers.
Yep. And that's actually an important clarification because there's two other taxing jurisdictions for the city of Northfield. But the school district taxes are our entire boundary. So it includes Dundas, multiple townships. So there are a wide variety of different impacts for all of the taxpayers. But obviously the majority are, are here in the city limit.
And I think it's important that, I think when people look at that tax statement, you know, they look at that processes, well, everybody does it the same. As you know, at the county and at the city level, those governing boards are able to make the determination about what their levy is going to be. As Val shared tonight, the school district levy is very prescriptive. There's very little room for what we as a district have a chance to, to approve. In fact, as you know, most of the big things are voter-approved for school districts. So even though it's on the same tax statement, the way that we identify the levy is very prescriptive compared to what the county and or the city does.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Amy?
So if this is the maximum amount that we're allowed to levy for next year, there's no way that we could levy more than that? So that, so no matter what happens, there's going to be a decrease in the amount that we levy from last year to next year?
Yes, unless there is some mathematical error that they find, which I reviewed the numbers and I think everything was appropriate. It's very unlikely that there's a, a large mathematical error. It's usually very minimal type things. I'm very confident in saying that our, our levy would go down.
I think that'll make people very happy.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
If I can just, I want to reiterate though, because the levy overall is the collective tax impact on the entire district. It is not the tax impact on your house. Because every year we have legitimate, reasonable questions. Well, wait a minute. You know, in the presentation, you said the levy is going down 1.5%, but my taxes went up. And it even says my school district taxes went up because the, the real piece that's important is your home valuation. And so of 10 questions we get every year, nine of them, we go back to the home valuation. And by the time people get their tax statement in November, the period of time where you can challenge your home evaluation is long gone. That's usually in April, I believe, March and April. Am I right about, right around that time? So I, I think that that's the other key. When we, when we can, I can guarantee you when we conduct our Truth in Taxation hearing in December, the, one of the questions that we will field in that period of time almost always comes back to home valuation. So, you know, when we talk about, we talk about the, the overall levy is going down. And if your house stayed the exact same as it did last year, then your taxes would go down. But we know in this housing market, very few people's houses remain the same. In fact, I think it's, well, we'll get the heat map. It's one of my favorite things Rice County produces. They give us the heat map of how did the valuations increase or decrease through the county? And I, you're going to see a lot of increase this year just because of the shortage of inventory here. So we know the valuations are going up because houses are selling more for, for higher cost.
I just had one other question about, so the, the enrollment. When, when we finally, when, when we do the final levy, is that based on October 1st enrollment? Is that the number? Or what enrollment numbers do you use to?
So are you talking about the final levy in December or?
Just in general, what is the enrollment number that you use? Cause that's really difficult. I understand.
If, so for this levy, I use typically what we have projected for the budget in the spring, unless there's some dramatic change that happens in the summer, which there was not at this point that I'm aware of. And so that's the number that we use so that that document ties to all of the other budget items that you've seen and it's consistent. If there is a, a significant change between that and the revised budget, then I may update the ADM estimates. But again, I can only, I can only go backwards. So if we had 100 more kids, I can't actually increase our levy higher than the number that happened September 30th, if that makes sense. I can go backwards so that we don't levy too much and have to have a negative adjustment in the future. But we can never go higher than that, right? But part of that three-year adjustment cycle is them truing up our enrollment. So on the next year's, it's actually two years behind because of how long it takes the state to finalize our enrollment. We don't get final enrollment until January of the following year. And then they take that number compared to what we estimated and then make sure that we get made whole, basically. So it's kind of a process. Five years start to finish when you consider by the time we actually do this piece of it to the final adjustment. It's a five-year overall process.
That, that's crazy. And, and you keep track of all of that so well, which is why we are so grateful that you are our Finance Director. So any other questions? So thank you for this. And of course I had said prior to questions and comments, I'd ask for a motion. And then every year, Val, I kind of mess it up. And I talked to you today and said, this is how we're going to do it, but it's fine. The questions were excellent. I appreciate everybody engaging in, in this discussion. So we do, it is an item for individual action. So now I'm going to ask if there is a motion to certify to county auditors the 2021 payable 2022 preliminary levy limitation and certification at the maximum authority. Moved by Corey. Is there a second? Second by Amy. I can now ask for any final questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We did have one item for individual action that was added. So I will ask if there is a motion to hire a 1.0 FTE licensed special education resource teacher for the Portage Online Program in Greenville Park Elementary at a projected cost and salary and benefits of $95,627, of which the cost will be fully covered by one-time federal funding. Motion. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Any final questions or comments on this? Sarah Pratt has been good to stay for, for the meeting. So if we have any other questions or comments for Sarah? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is our last item for individual action. We do not have any items for information this evening. So I can move on to future meetings. The two meetings in October, October 11th and October 25th, regular school board meetings convene at 7:00 PM here in the Northfield District Office Boardroom. So thank you to everyone for a great meeting. With that, I asked for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.